I call the zoning board review for Thursday, October 23rd, 2025 to order. Heidi, can we call them all, please?
Ellen Porno.
Absolutely, call us.
David Trunza.
Yeah.
John Ball.
Here.
Keith Kyle.
Here.
Christine Broschen.
Absolutely, pause.
Karen Cucina.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have four members present, you have a...
The, I take it the minutes are not prepared, so is that why we're...
Continue.
Can I have a motion to continue approval of the minutes to November 20th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get to the next matters, there's one, two, three. There are three matters that are being continued. If anyone's here on these, let me just announce some of this. Gibson Corp Condominium Association, which is D1, is, there's a motion. Someone make a motion to defer to a date certain of November 20th, 2025 with town re-advertising and we notifying the appropriate board. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next matter is D2, Perillo. This is the applicant's first request. We have a motion to defer to a date certain of November 20th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next matter is D3 Nero, applicant's first request. Can I have a motion to defer this to a date certain of November 20th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the first matter is the continuation of the appeal on Kearney, Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Garrett, on behalf of the applicant, appelli, John Kearney. We have moved the Shen, you might be happy to know. And one of the officials from the building department was there today. I don't know whether there's a report or something, but he told my client that he wasn't compliant, so as a result of that, we're going to withdraw the appeal.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Landry is here.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman?
It certainly is, I couldn't verify that, didn't know that until tonight, but if the time is satisfied, then...
Right, all right, so let's just withdraw.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you missed one, can you defer to Lomani, D6?
Oh, sorry, another matter that's being deferred is Lomani. The applicant's first request, we have a motion to defer to a date certain of November 20th, 2025. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the first matter on tonight's docket is Martino, plat S dot 108, 801 Ocean Road.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Jack McGree for the applicant, the office is located at 21 Garden City Drive, Cranston Island. Applicant and owner is Denise Martino. Mrs. Martino is here to answer any questions, along with Frank Correro, who's a professional civil engineer. The property is located at 801 Ocean Road, across the street from Scarborough, Scarborough Beach, and is located in our ten zone with a lot area of 7,978 square feet. The proposal before you is to construct a new single-family, single-level, four-bedroom family home. This may involve either a full demolition of the existing structure, or depending on Wayne's guidance, from Wayne, retaining portion of the foundation and portions of a wall. The goal there is to avoid triggering the classification of a complete voluntary demolition, which could be subject to that, project be subject to under that new Supreme Court case, McCloud versus Wesley's zoning board. I tried to get something in writing from Wayne, I did have a telephone, a deep-person conversation with him. He thought keeping up some portion of the, of the foundation would be sufficient to not qualify it as a complete demolition. So, however, you know, I, I heard unofficially that this board's taken a position, McCloud versus Wesley. I did have a conversation with Bob Craven, he thought it was distinguishable, but I heard, and I haven't heard from the horse's mouth yet, that this board says they don't think it is distinguishable. So, I'm not sure which direction to go in, but either way, if you're taking the position that we can't demolish, if we do demolish, we have to conform, that wouldn't happen to knock the whole thing down, we'll keep some portion of that foundation up to avoid the finding that it's a voluntary complete demolition. That's my point.
Well, I'm wondering, counsel, if we're...
Sure, so it sounds like, we don't have Wayne here tonight, I understand he's away...
I sent the email, I got CCQ.
Yeah, he's away on a work-related matter. But if the building official's position is that a, certain portions of the structure remain up, it doesn't constitute a voluntary demolition, then you're not in that realm. So that may make that matter moot. If Mr. McGree wants to proceed in that manner this evening, and you folks are inclined to say approve the application, I would say do so on the condition that that is the position of Mr. Pimentel, who could finally approve this, so it would be a conditional approval. I would just need to hear that from Wayne myself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, my only concerns with this would be, is going forward even tonight, is without Wayne here to explain that to us, because it seems like anybody could get around that decision by just partially demolishing the structure, when they're really doing it, just they're keeping up three walls so they can avoid this case. I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, and I don't...
I mean, that's been done before, you know, you have to, sometimes you have to keep up one wall in order not to consider a complete demolition, I mean, I think it's the same thing. Is it ridiculous? Absolutely, it's ridiculous, but we've been handed that decision. And I know there's, I think there's some modification of the ordinance in process.
That's what I was going to add, just for this board's education, I'm working on a draft to modify the ordinance, so it is clear that we can proceed outside of that case, whether or not it is applicable. That will have to go through the normal process, generally council to planning board, back to council, so it will take some time, but that will, the wheels are in motion on that already.
Do you have anything to add to that? Because I don't, I mean, it seems like if that's the case, and they proceed today, and we deny them, then they're going to be out for a year, right? They're not going to be able to come back for a year.
Yeah, yes, but I think, Mr. Chairman, you make a good point, that you haven't heard from Mr. Pimentel. I just did a real quick review of what the existing structure looks like, and the proposed structure. I'm not sure, the foundations don't match, so it might be helpful to have Wayne, the engineer, provide that information, and have Wayne review and sign off on that, because it's...
I have my engineer here, he can speak to what you...
But, right, but Wayne's not here to...
Right.
Right, Wayne, you know, you could even do that ahead of time, and then once Wayne signs off, that makes it a lot easier, but that's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, if we, if we did get the approval, you could envision it upon A, Wayne saying that we can do that, or B, we would have to wait for the ordinance to be amended in order to, to avoid that, that case issue.
And I'm just wondering if it makes, you know, you know, jump in here, Jack, a time sense to wait for Wayne to give a definitive statement on that for us, because we're, you know, we feel like we're bound by that Supreme Court decision, and a demolition is a demolition is a demolition. I mean, if we, I don't know, it's just my view, that...
Could we, since I have my expert here, could we proceed tonight, and then keep it, keep it open? So my people want to have to come back again, and I could just come back, and hopefully we'll have some, you know, Wayne, Wayne's input? And then if, if Wayne says, oh no, I, that's not what I meant, or, I had a conversation with him, he did say that, but I don't have it written, so if I kept it open, and then kept it open for the next meeting, do we have Wayne's input? And then if Wayne says no, then...
You okay with that?
I can withdraw the application.
I think what I'm concerned about is, I'm hearing a couple of things. Wayne is going to make a judgment on what constitutes a demolition, and he's going to make the percentage, but at the same time, a new ordinance is being drafted, and if a new ordinance is being drafted, it's up to the town council to formulate what the policy is going to be in this town in terms of percentage, and that means citizens are going to be able to come in and give their opinion, and it'll be subject to the public hearing process, and I think I'm just concerned about having Wayne substitute his judgment in this interim period, since we know a new regulation is being formulated, as opposed to letting the policymakers make the policy decisions.
That's not what the regulation is going to say. All the regulation is going to say is that, even if you are an illegal, non-conforming lot of record, you have the right to ask for dimensional relief. Has nothing to do with the...
Well, I haven't seen it. You're telling us what a proposed regulation is going to say, and we haven't seen a proposed regulation, and it hasn't been publicized, so we're taking a lot, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I'm just saying, you saying it, I don't think is sufficient for me to rely on that, with all due respect. And I really feel like our job is, is to implement policy, not create policy. So I think I, I'm having a little bit discomfort with this because of it, but you're, you're entitled.
I mean, I think all that's, you're asking for at this point in time is to put on your evidence, and then adjourn this hearing.
Right, wait for Wayne's input, and if he says, no, it's not going to work, then I will just withdraw my application next meeting. I mean, if that...
Sure?
All right, I mean, yeah, so why don't you just put on your case, but we'll hold, adjourn it so that you can put on the additional evidence, which, Wayne, or whatever.
Right, exactly. So, okay, thank you. So the existing structures are non-conforming, and that's just a left-side yard setback, it's almost on the property line, if you go back to that, that same elevation. We're making the left side more conforming, and seeking a 1.07-foot relief from the left-side setback, and 5.07 feet of relief from the right setback, mainly because of the four-foot landing, for the set of stairs for the egress on the right side. They're removing the one, if you can see that on there. Yeah, you'll see the O, you can just about see it, but, you know, the setback is right, really right there, almost in the line, and that's because of the landing over there. So we're basically just switching, switching sides, and we're making one side more conforming, and we're asking for some relief on the left side, so we can have ingress into the building. And also, the applicant, and they're here to speak about that, but they're, they desire to maintain wider center hall and accessible bathrooms to accommodate a wheelchair, which is pertaining to the 165 square feet of lot coverage relief request. The hardscape variance is being driven by an effort to keep the property as far away from the ocean as possible, and to create enough area for parking for vehicles with the ability to pull out without having to, to jockey cars. So with that being said, I can bring Frank Correro up here, he's a professional engineer, that can walk you through the plans and answer any other questions that you may have.
Frank, would you come up?
I have to get sworn in.
Mr. President, you solemn swear the testimony, you give him the matter now, and hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
It's Frank Correro, C-O-R-R-A-O.
And Frank, could you just briefly give the board your qualifications?
Yeah, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I've been that since 1984. Since that time, I worked at the Department of Transportation, I've been building my own houses, as well as I'm current Public Works Director in the city of Cranston.
And if there's no further questions, I ask...
Yeah, he'd be qualified as an expert, and I'd be eligible for purposes of this hearing.
Thank you. Could you just run through the, perhaps, the site plan and the elevation plans for the board?
Yeah, I mean, couple of the things that we had to deal with is, one, to try to get a good water quality structure over here, so that will be able to be a rain garden, to help adjust, to address for the pavement, to be placed with a stone driveway here. One of the reasons we're trying to keep the house back here is flood elevation is approximately at this location. We're trying to make sure we can get as far away as we can from the water, as well as be able to meet the minimum rear setbacks, without getting too close to the rear part of the home. The overall width of the house, we ended up with a 30-foot house, because what happens is, in the future, there's a potential that they may be a wheelchair person, and you need accessibility. As a result of that, we tried to make the hallway in the house, which is back in here, back here, tried to make that as a four-foot wide, because anything less than that, it really becomes a little difficult to maneuver in a wheelchair to get in and out of any of the rooms. The current home that they're in does have a very narrow, and a couple of times that Ms. Martino has been in the wheelchair, it's very difficult to maneuver, you have to get out of the wheelchair in order to make your turns. So we decided to try to get the four-foot here, as well as the bathrooms, which is here and here, those also being accessible, to be able to get a wheelchair if they need assistance to get in and out of there, putting them at grade, and as a result of that, that sort of has increased what we need here, here, and here, without making these rooms so small that they're really not going to be manageable as a bedroom. One of the other things that also happened, is as a result of getting accessibility, all of the doorways that we have in this home are all three-foot wide, conventionally you use two-foot-six doorways, et cetera.
And I think you may know the story, but the back bedroom has a, has a back deck off there.
There is a small deck in there, because what happens is, they have a family member that is elderly as well, that does not have any family left, so they're asking that person to be able to come and stay with them at this location, they would just like to have her, have her own access back here, which is the reason why we had to create this doorway. This may be behind the door, it could be closed, and it's not really a good egress for the rest of the family, should anything be happening in this part of the home.
Okay. And then I just have to quickly run through the development standards, because this is an overlay district, and we have to answer these questions. So, in your opinion, will the product interfere with public access to or use any enjoyment of tidal waters and shoreline features?
No, it will not.
And will the product degrade the aesthetic and recreational values of tidal waters, diminish the natural diversity of shoreline features?
No, it is not, that's why we had moved it as far away as we could.
And will the project degrade existing water quality, or adversely affect the circulation and flushing patterns of tidal waters?
No, it will not.
Okay, and will the project increase the volume or velocity of stormwater runoff?
No, it will not, that's the reason for that, detention area that you had up at the front part of the corner, as well as all the roof drains will also be draining into that rain garden.
And finally, will the proposed product diminish the value of any shoreline features as storm and hurricane buffers?
No, it will not. All features are on the opposite side of the street, based on some discussions we have had with CRMC, there are no coastal features on this property itself.
And finally, will the project pose any threat to public health or safety?
No, it will not.
I'd just like a comment on the side, just, I know that this discussion was near. You know the statute, the state statute requires an especially used for an objective criteria? I hardly think any of those things, there are some, I think many of those are subjective, but I'm not going to die on that hill, my client's here to get approval, but I just wanted to put that on the record, if I'm people worth of our...
Before he says down, Jack, I mean, can you, what, can you show what, what is existing there now?
So, I have some images that I can show you, but I did not receive a existing site plan. It kind of doesn't look like it. Yeah, I can show you the overlap of the existing structure, but there isn't a specific existing site plan, but...
You can see it, I have a, you know what, I have a...
I can see them now.
Better than the one in the picture. It's shaded better, come the color. Yeah, this is much better. This isn't showing up on the, you can see right here, the light shaded area, it's the...
She's got to take all this down, can you hear them, okay?
No.
All right, okay, good, I see, all right, perfect.
Where's the, where's the existing...
But this is...
Where's the existing...
No, images on the...
Do we know what that is?
This is, what's, Jack, what you just showed us is what's up there, but that's the proposed, right?
Yeah, this, I believe this is, no, this is existing right here. That's existing down there, in the light, which is right, which is right here, that's existing. You see that, this right here, there's one building right here, there's another building right here, and then the proposed is right along here, and then right to there, so all this will be taken off, taken away.
So what part of the wall would stay on there?
How do you go from this...
That's my question.
I'm going from two to one, and save it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the question is that, what portion of this foundation is going to remain?
Well, originally, there was no intention to do that, as a result of that recent case, it's kind of brought us to a point where we have to make a decision as to what wall could we save. I believe if any, we'd be able to save that wall on the house that's part of the existing home, which is, this is the existing home, pretty much, what you see from here to here to here, and maintain this wall, and if there was part of a foundation that had to remain, it's also just about somewhere along this front porch, is the front of the home as well, of the existing home, so you would maintain that.
So are those two different houses, or that's just all ones?
Which, we have, this is this.
The existing.
The existing house is just one house, that's a small garage.
Okay.
Shed, storage, at the back of it.
Karen, is it kind of...
Oh, right here. That's the garage.
And you'll see on this side, this is where, yeah, it's almost to the property line right there, I think it's almost on the property line.
So the house is being pushed back when the shed is going with the garage?
Correct. The front of the house will be about 75 feet from here, and right now, it's approximately 75 feet to this as well, so trying to maintain that, and again, they've owned the house for several years, and I had asked them about how far this tidal waters have ever gotten during any of the storms or hurricanes, and the maximum it's been is pretty much halfway up, and that's it. So we just still wanted to try to maintain anything we could, to try to keep that foundation out of the potential flood area.
Any other questions? John, did you have a question?
No.
I'm just going to bring up my client, and they can just talk to you about how long they've been there, perhaps, and...
That's kind of dramatic.
And she was just twenty-two, Stacy.
Do you want, do you want her, she's, I just pulled a chair up, and she could...
Of course.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be right up here. Follow me, I'm going to go right up here. Just move right away.
Why don't you stay where she wants it?
She's there where she is.
Okay, it's okay.
All right.
Have to be sworn in, that's all.
Yeah, be sworn in, so raise your right hand.
As long as she's sworn in, that's fine.
Do you solemn swear the testimony, give him the matter now, and hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Denise Martino, D-E-N-I-S-D-M-A-R-T-I-N-O.
So Denise, how long have you owned this property?
It's been my family since the forties, thirties, forties. I was little, my grandmother owned it, then it went to my parents', and my parents was deceased, and now it's mine.
And how long have you been living there?
Well, all my life.
But right now, is it, is it your full-time?
No, no, I live in Johnston, but I want to retire here, so that's my, that's my quest.
You're going to sell your house in Johnston, and go down here full-time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and tell me a little bit about that back bedroom with the depth that you wanted to add on the back.
Yeah, my cousin is going to come with me, she's by herself, her parents are gone, she's an only child, I'm an only child, so she's just going to come with me, we're close in age, she's 74 and 73, and she's a smoker, so I wanted her to have her own door out of the house, no, no smoking in my house, don't smoke in my house now, so that won't happen any of that, and that's it, she'll help me with bills and taxes and so on, that's it, we'll both retire there, and my cousin. And I have a son, who, suppose, you know, who should go to him too, his family after me, so hopefully he'll be around Roa, I hope.
And as far as the access, the width of that, that aisle going through the middle of the house, that's for, perhaps a wheelchair in the future?
For myself, because I've already had it twice, and the osteone arthritis get worse, so I know it's going to end up like that, so I knew that space. Because I've had that trouble in my existing house now, so I know what to look forward to.
I don't have any further questions for my client.
Do you want to adjourn now, so that, I mean, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I think, so I've had my expert, and I've had my witness testify, I can reserve my concluding comments for the next meeting.
And it might be, I don't know, leave it up to me, but I think it might be helpful to get some kind of, like, legal memo on this partial destruction thing, as a way
to get, as a way to get around this Supreme Court case, I mean, it is what it is, we feel
like we need to abide by it, it's what the law says.
That's why Wayne's input is, I just need to hear it from him, and then look at the status.
I tried to get it, but he was, I'm sure he was studying really hard out there on that convention.
So I think we keep the public hearing open, like, taking the matter to a date certain, and then we can proceed.
You have a motion to continue it to, what's it, 20th?
November 20th. Oh, they need to continue it on November 20th?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the other applicant's not here, I'm going to go check the whole...
They are not here?
No. They were informed.
I'm really hungry.
They were informed, being informed.
Were they here, as many as...
Yeah.
Oh, they just never showed up.
All right, the next matter on the calendar is KSN LLC. Is anybody here for that?
They're not here.
They're not here, so, I mean, what do we do, just pass it off the calendar, or? Never had one, I've never had anyone not show up yet in like, eight years, or whatever.
Okay, so I would, I mean, you, Mr. Chairman, you could move this to a date certain of next month, just because, who knows, perhaps the person got a flat tire, you know, they meant to be here, and there was some other emergency that precluded them from being here today, so if you were to, you know, withdraw it, or close it with prejudice, you know, you might be foreclosing their opportunity, there could have been some emergency, we're just not aware of.
Yeah, I don't think we should do anything with prejudice, so...
Right. If you close, so for instance, though, if you, if you don't continue it to a date certain, then the notification is not preserved.
Well, is there anyone willing to make a motion to...
It's your prerogative, I'm just letting you know.
I mean, I think that makes sense, rather than, there's no reason to prejudice, that we don't know why they're not here.
Do we want to go to December, since we're happy on November 20th?
I would say, yeah. Motion for, to continue this to December 18th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there any other business tonight, although I think we can conclude our meeting? Our motion to postpone the meeting. Motion second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.